Welcome, West Orange, to the November 21st, 2017 Town Council meeting. It's the 19th meeting of the year. Just so you know, you can always watch previous council meetings on the town website and also on Public Access TV. Our next council meeting, the final one of the year, will be December 5th. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28th, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8th, 2016. Councilwoman Gerino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Kropovia.
Present. We have a jam-packed conference agenda, so let's get to it. I want to invite up to the lectern Ms. Megan Brill, who's the Executive Director of the Downtown West Orange Alliance, and she has with her Ms. Jennifer Marzigliano, who is the Chapter Manager in New Jersey for the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition, so you can sort of get a feel for what we're about to talk about.
Thank you very much. As you know, the Downtown Alliance is the managing partner for the Mayor's 5K Run. It's one of the very different things that we do for the downtown and for West Orange. The 5K Run is a partnership between the township and the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition. Jen Marzigliano is the new chairperson for New Jersey, and she joined us a couple of months ago. But the thing that is special to me about the 5K is meeting all the ladies and the stories that, you know, that are affected, their families, and the reason why they are a big fundraising force. We have so many people in town that have been affected, either are survivors of ovarian cancer or lost someone to ovarian cancer, and it's neat to see how strong people are and how they come out. We had record numbers again this year, even in the really, really hot weather. We ended up having over 1,000 people attend the event in October. So it's a... In September. September, I'm sorry. In September. So it's a really special event for us. We love being able to partner with the ovarian cancer this year. Jen got started pretty much after the run was set up, but the volunteers stepped up in such a big way. So I want to introduce Jen, she'll tell you a little bit more about what she does for the NOCC and who we are. And then we have a big check to present, so Jerry, when Jen's done, if you want to come and help me present.
Sure.
Thank you, Megan. So as Megan said, I've been with the NOCC only since September, and I actually started the Wednesday before the walk, which was on that Sunday. So what lucky me, I get, one of my first few days on the job is the most inspirational day of the year. So I get to meet these amazing, hard-working volunteers, the excitement of the participant in the teams, the love and support that was shown for ovarian cancer survivors, and the dedication from the Township of West Orange. They all coming together are truly incredible. Thank you so much for helping us bring awareness to ovarian cancer and the color teal, partnering with the NOCC to achieve its mission to save lives and improve the quality of life for survivors. Thank you to Mayor Parisi, the Town Councilman, Jerry Gerino, the Downtown West Orange Alliance, and Megan at the helm of that, and the whole Town Council. I'm super excited to help plan next year, as Megan said, will be her right-hand woman, as she, you know, did an amazing job this year. So thank you to everybody.
We raised over $87,000, and the check from the NOCC is for $76,936.
I love them.
Also, one of the things that we did, you know, we... So many people participated and fundraised in this event, so new this year, we decided to make a certificate that thanked the different people that ended up participating. So Council President, we have one for the Township of West Orange, and specifically, Jerry and Michelle took out sponsorship, so I have a thank you for them as well. Michelle and Jerry, there you go. Thank you, guys, very much.
Councilwoman Gerino is very busy during this conference agenda.
I'm sorry.
The next... He's also going to kick off the next portion of the agenda, celebrating Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Councilman.
I don't have it. Oh, is this... That's it. Thank you, Councilman. Sorry. No, no, we're sorry. Todd, want to come up, please?
Yes.
Todd, it's always good seeing you this time of year, and let's find the microphone that's working. Just on a personal point of view, this past year has been a very lost time for a number of people that we know throughout the township, people that I personally know who have passed away due to pancreatic cancer. But with all the information, all the technology, and all the research is going on, people need to reach out to people like Todd and ask, what are the alternatives? What is there available? And that's what we need to do, is communication. And, you know, I hate hearing every day somebody telling me so-and-so passed away. You know, we lost this, you know, last year, Mary Roth, mother-in-law of Mayor Parisi. We also lost Floyd Goldman, who was an attorney in town, but also a Mountain Top League soccer coach for girls, who used to yell and shout at me on the soccer field. That's a voice I'm going to miss, Todd. But good people, and we need to try to do as much as we can, and hopefully we will. And with people like yourself and your organization, I think we'll make inroads.
Thank you.
So I'll read this on behalf of the Mayor and the Township Council. Proclamation. Whereas in 2017, an estimated 53,670 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 43,090 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause around 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in single digits at just 9%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 71% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis, while 91% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,270 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2017, whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related deaths across the world, and whereas there was our estimated 360,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed in 2015. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of West Orange are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risk factors of pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments, therefore be it resolved that Robert D. Parisi designates November 16th, 2017, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Township of West Orange. Todd, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work we do.
Sure.
Okay. There's no charge.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The microphone is yours, please.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the Council and the Mayor for making this happen. This has been probably about seven or eight years where I've come to these meetings. And you mentioned a couple of people that you know that have lost their battle of pancreatic cancer. If you don't know someone that is battling pancreatic cancer, you probably will. This is a cancer where the incidence rate is rising, even though the survival rate has gone up. When my father died of this disease 15 years ago, it was about 5%. Now it's 9%. So it's going up, but it's still not acceptable. There aren't many viable treatment options. There's no early-detection method. So what we're doing as part of November is helping raise awareness. November's Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. I work at Liberty and Roosevelt Middle Schools. This past week in Liberty, we had the students wearing purple the week of November 16th. We had them wearing purple ribbons. There were announcements made informing them about pancreatic cancer. It's a disease, like I said, that many people don't know about. So by using opportunities like this to discuss the disease and letting you know about resources that are out there, it's very, very important to those that are fighting this disease. So if you do know someone that's fighting pancreatic cancer, I urge you to go to pancan.org. That's P-A-N-C-A-N dot org. There are clinical trials that are available, and there's a toll-free number you can call to reach out to an organization that's on the website to learn about nutrition options and other avenues that might be out there to defeat this disease. Before I go, I just want to, once again, thank the Township Council and Mayor Parisi for this... Helping us with this national fight against pancreatic cancer. Also, I want to thank Sherri Quirk and Karen Carnavale for helping set this up. Every single year, it's so smooth. It's great to be out here, to use this forum to raise awareness about this terrible disease. So once again, it's pancan.org to learn about more information. And, you know, I'd like to see the end of all cancers, whether it's ovarian cancer, whether it's pancreatic cancer, breast cancer. Eventually, we'll have an answer to these diseases. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Council President, I think that goes hand-in-hand with Movember. I see that's coming up next.
That's a perfect segue.
Uh-huh, it was.
Up next is Mr. Perry Bashkov. He's the Town's... His firm is the Town Social Media Manager and for related services. He comes to the town. This is his annual trek to update the Town Council on what he's been doing.
Yes, thank you.
Growing a mustache.
Thank you, Town Council and everyone here tonight. Yes, I am Perry Bashkov, and this is my fifth or sixth year now working with the town. And I do come here once, maybe twice a year, to kind of give an update on the successes that we've had, the growth that we've had in promoting our great town. So I've prepared a few notes here to kind of do a year-end recap, if you will, of reminding everyone of all the great things that we've done and how we've gone about doing them. So we looked at 2017, from January to just yesterday, roughly 324 days. We made over 1,500 social posts. That's four and a half posts a day, if you're doing the math. It's over 650 photos, over 75 videos, 150 links to articles and other websites, and 250-plus events in and around our great town. When we're posting, and we post on Facebook, we post on Twitter, we post on Instagram, sometimes we post on Snapchat, and we post on YouTube. And for those of you who are not following, that handle is WestOrangeInfo. So any of those platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, if you search WestOrangeInfo, you'll be able to like or follow us. When we post, we're averaging anywhere from 50,000 to 100,000 impressions a week on our social postings. That's a lot of people seeing all the great stuff that we're doing here in town. Our viewers, they love pictures. Some of our most engaging postings are simple pictures from in and around town, either that we have taken or ones that we find online that we repost, or ones that we've been sent. Viewers obviously love positive, and they love the people. By far, our most engaging posts are those that showcase all of the amazing people in our town. So examples, when the Department of Public Works, working overtime in the snowstorm, that's a lot of likes. West Orange Fire Department collecting donations for Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria, that's a ton of likes. West Orange Police Department promotion ceremonies, that's a lot of likes. We launched an online disaster relief campaign to help residents in our sister township, West Orange, Texas, after Hurricane Harvey decimated their neighborhood. Earlier this year, we did our first Facebook Live office hours with Mayor Parisi, where residents were able to actually ask questions live, and Mayor Parisi answered them on the spot. This was very successful. We plan on doing more of that in the near future. Social media played a huge role in the promotion of our Fourth of July weekend in West Orange. This past summer, we covered the Traveling Vietnam War Memorial with drone video, the food truck festival, and fireworks with photography. Over 12,000 people stepped foot on the West Orange High School campus that weekend. We use social media to help others in a big way. For example, just recently, the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. They've seen more activity this year in donations than ever before, thanks to several residents, the power of social media. We've raised over $7,000 in simple online donations, 100% of which has gone to purchasing items for the pantry. And Resident Barry Geltziler, his annual turkey donation collection drive broke records, over 265 turkeys. It's really amazing to see what positive can be done with social media. We've watched the Edison Village Downtown Redevelopment Project come together, lots of drone footage there as well. We stepped up the promotion of two often overlooked gems in town, the Public Library and Recreation Department. All library events are now syndicated through our social profiles, and we're driving more families to the Rec Department online portal for sign-ups than ever before. We used social media and received amazing press coverage from places like NJ.com and CBS for our West Orange Rocks Campaign this summer, part of the Global Kindness Rocks Project. Residents were encouraged to decorate rocks with positive messages, hide them in our amazing parks here in West Orange, create a little hide-and-seek game. The program is ongoing. Residents are already looking forward to painting rocks next summer, and we had painting parties and everything this summer that was all driven by social media. We've worked very closely with the West Orange Police Department to create and utilize social media to push various important public service announcements focused on safety. Things like making sure your cars are locked, no texting and driving. Obviously, they're a huge positive influence here in town. Just a few weeks ago, we had the grand opening event for the long-awaited West Orange Skate Park. Via creating various partnerships with local skate shops, using social media, we reached over 50,000 people in social media who now know West Orange has another reason to come spend time here, live here, and hopefully raise a family. We use social media to announce the addition of the brand-new jitney route, Route 6, which expanded the commuter jitney coverage to additional neighborhoods in town. Our senior community, they got a lot of love this year, posting about special events, transportation options, and of course, the senior survey. And, you know, some of these, the pictures that I mentioned before, these heartfelt pictures showing amazing milestones, several residents breaking that century mark, those always get a lot of traction in social media. We, of course, promote new businesses in town, including Manhattan Bagel, who saw a line around the corner into the parking lot on open day, Brown Bear Pub, Lyric Performing Arts Center, Sweet Garden Bake Shop, and more. We've created some fun videos hosted by a West Orange High School senior, Vincent Means, highlighting these local businesses that we've seen over 75,000 views on. Highly recommend you check them out if you haven't. That's on our website, westorange.org. All of our local business promotion comes with constant reminders of our Shop West Orange program, where residents can, of course, earn property tax rebates for shopping locally. If you have no idea what I'm talking about, go to westorange.org/shopwestorange. It's all there. We went behind the scenes of our West Orange Police Department Junior Police Academy closing ceremony this year. We're using social media to promote Movember, of course. This is not my normal look, the mustaches for Movember, where we raise funds for men's physical, mental health. We had an amazing fundraiser this past weekend. We even have the Police Department involved this year. There's over 10 officers growing mustaches this year with us as well. And we're already gearing up to leverage social media for the upcoming Holiday Open House next weekend and Christmas tree lighting. Keep your eyes open on social for some really special stuff around that Santa Neighborhood Tour happening this year as well. And lastly, later this week, as we're all feeling thankful for the community we live in and the people that we live around, we'll be launching a new campaign that we're springboarding off of a powerful messaging campaign that we launched out of the high school called "We Are the Answer." This program promotes acceptance, diversity, and unity against hate in the classrooms, hallways, streets, and our neighborhood communities. The people in this campaign are the answer, and by leading the way, we hope others will follow. The campaign features real people in our community. You'll be able to view it Thanksgiving morning, again, on our social profiles. That's WestOrangeInfo, and it'll be on our website, westorange.org/theanswer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bashkov. Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
Do you post everything, or does that little guy over there do?
That's right. So tonight, I brought my son so he could see what this is all about. He's obviously very involved in everything that I do, but I want to get him started early in getting involved in everything, so soon we'll put him to work, for sure.
Well done. No, Perry, well done.
Thank you very much.
Enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bashkov. Next on the agenda is an update on Downtown Redevelopment from our Business Administrator, Jack Sayers.
Downtown redevelopment is flying, as we can see. I was down there the other day. They are now putting in their telephone lines for the apartments, so they're going to be pretty close to being ready to start doing what they need to do. They're still telling us that by spring, we're going to be ready to start renting in the R over R. But I'm not sure they're that far along yet, but they are doing a lot of work here, and it's looking good. Very good.
Any questions?
I like the new street lamps, though.
Yeah.
They look very nice. They blend right in.
That... I like the sidewalks they're putting in, too, with the brick. It looks really nice.
Have you seen them? Council President?
I'm sure I have.
Okay. I apologize for my coughing.
I would really rather not have to ask this question.
Sure.
But I feel like I have to. Prism has missed yet another property tax payment on their property.
I don't know that. I didn't check that, to be honest, but I can check it tomorrow.
Okay. Perhaps they're so busy with...
The more issues we get.
Perhaps they're so busy with Phase 1 that they forgot to put the check in the mail.
The more money we make.
That's true. That's true. We have this...
I'll check tomorrow.
We have this debate. I talk about how it's a requirement of our contract, and you say we get more money, so... But I just wanted to point it out because it's, what, roughly about $100,000, maybe even more than that.
I'll check tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Council, he's on report.
Okay.
Councilman, if you can talk?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council.
Or do sign language if you can.
No. Thank you, Council President, and my colleagues. Thank you. First thing, this past week, last week, we had our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting. A lot of good comments came out of it. We are planning in the early spring an event that will include programs and activities for youth and adults in a central location of the township, talking about traffic safety, bike safety, pedestrian safety, and education. So the committee is working on planning that, working with the county, and working with different organizations throughout the township and the county and the state to pull this event together with help from the Bodlani's and their foundation, too. So that'll be announced very shortly, when and where the event will be taking place. I want to hand over, if it's okay with the Council President, to Mrs. Brill to talk about the Downtown Alliance's Holiday Open House this Saturday. So if, with your permission, Council President.
Certainly, certainly, please.
Well, we have a couple of new things that are happening this year. One is Breakfast with Santa. It'll be at Washington Cafeteria. It's $7 for a child, $10 for an adult. Kids 2 and under are free. It's only for two hours, so it's 9 to 11. And then we are starting the trolley ride an hour earlier, since we got locked out of trolley. You know, some people couldn't ride. We were overrun. It was a beautiful, very cool December day last year, so we're hoping for great weather again. Maybe something similar to the 5K would be good, a little hot. But I still am filling spots in the trolley for a guided tour, so if you aren't interested, I have a couple of you that have already gotten back to me about what time is good for you. So we're running from 10:00 in the morning to 3:30 is the last trolley stop. The other thing that's brand-new is our partnership with the library. We're actually doing, it's not Build the Bear, but it's Stuff an Animal, and it is free. We got three sponsors this year. Advantage Pest Control sponsoring, $250. Select Auto Repair is sponsoring, and the Downtown Alliance is putting in a little bit more money. I wanted to be able to cover about 100 kids could get a really cute snowman, or gingerbread man, or the deer is adorable, the reindeer is so cute. So we'll have room for 100 kids. You need to register for both the breakfast and the library, so you need to be on a list in order to participate in those two events. And then we have Pictures with Santa. We also have photo ops that are going to be happening throughout downtown, and all of that will be on social media and on our websites. The forums are up on both the Downtown website, the Chamber website, and the Township website. We're hoping to cover everybody possible that could be looking at, you know, for online information, but it's going to be a great day, December 2nd. So we're starting a little bit early with breakfast at 9:00, and then trolley starts at 10:00. And everything will be housed at Washington Avenue School. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Thank you, Council President. Oh, just going to talk about Rent a House. I'm sorry. Please. Also, with people, the questions that are going on with, you know, resident issues at Rent a House. Dan Ritchie from Marzulli Management is putting together an agenda and a meeting date to meet with the residents to go over their issues on Rent a House and their complaints and their call-outs on things that need to be done. The good thing is that the major project this year was the window installation for all the apartments and all the rooms in Rent a House. That project is completed, and all the punch lists for the windows have been completed according to the contractor. So things are really moving along at Rent a House, Council President, and we're trying to get the, you know, residents more involved and feel they can speak to management and speak to us, and that's what we want to do, make them feel comfortable in their homes. So thank you, Council President.
Do you have a date yet for the meeting? I know you've been talking about it for a while, so...
We're working on things. We're trying to find out, we're trying to get the tenants' organization to give us a meeting time, so be around their meeting, but their meeting president is like missing in action. So we're just going to put a date out for the residents within the next week, and I'll let the Council know when we're going to have that meeting, and, you know, they'll move forward, and the residents will get enough notification that they can attend the meeting. It'll be right there in the building.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. I wanted to commend the Pedestrian Safety Commission for the ordinance that's on this evening about creating the speed limit at a consistent 40 mile an hour along Pleasant Valley Way, excluding the school zones. So it's good advocacy there.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Okay. Long time coming. Following December 2nd, around the same day as December 2nd, the West Orange Arts Council is having their Holiday Boutique. So if you have Washington Street on one end, you have Valley Road on the other, they have handcrafted gifts at the West Orange Arts Council Gift and Gallery Shop, which is at 551 Valley Road, on Saturday and Sunday, December 2nd and 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. The Environmental Commission has been meeting monthly because we're investigating solar carports on the municipal parking lots and public schools to see if it is something that we can actually, not only conserve energy, but can save our tax dollars. It's too late to announce the Chamber Luncheon, which is tomorrow at Mayfair, but it's not too late to thank everyone that has purchased tickets. That's one of their main events in conjunction with Unico, Rotary, and the Lions Club tomorrow at noon. What else? Working with the Downtown Alliance and our Tree Forester, we're applying for a $20,000 grant, which is, looks very good. This is to repair and replenish trees, I think it's 100 trees or so, all along Main And I just heard, working with the grant writer, I just heard today that the COPS grant, we were awarded the COPS grant. This is a grant that the Police Department has submitted numerous times, but we were awarded a $500,000 grant for four new police officers. So that just happened today.
One of six communities.
Right, one of six communities, right. Very competitive. Very competitive. On December 10th, this is also, December 10th is an International Compassionate Friends Candle Lighting Ceremony, and it is an international event from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., candle lighting ceremony to remember a child that has been lost. This is sponsored by the Badlani Foundation, but what grew from a small group on their front lawn is now hosted for the community at the Cats Fieldhouse. So if you'd like to share that. Started out just as candle lighting ceremony. I know they do it in Central Park, and now what we do is flow candles on Vincent's Pond. So it's really a very touching ceremony. That's on December 10th, Sunday, December 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Cats Center. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our conference agenda. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's office on November 28, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8, 2016. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krokowiac?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Just to advise everyone, Councilwoman Castellino is unable to attend tonight, and we understand that Councilman Cirillo is going to be here, so we've got our fingers crossed. And also, you may have noticed, we're also missing a picture of our outgoing governor. Mr. Sayers, do you know what the situation is with that? He hasn't left yet.
I just asked Ms. Carnaval. I have no idea.
Okay.
By the time I noticed it.
I have no idea either.
So my guess is that someone may have taken it as a souvenir. So, ah...
Preserve the legacy.
I can tell you it wasn't me that did it.
Okay. First on our public agenda is public comment. For those of you who have, do not have the background in this, basically, you are recognized by the chair. Come up to the first or second row here so that we can speed up the process. You can come to the lectern when recognized. Please speak into both microphones and start out your discussion or your comments with your first and last name, both of them spelt, and also your address. And you have five minutes to speak. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand. Mr. Daniel M. Malanga, please come on up. I'll let Ms. Malanga go first, if you're okay with that. Mr. Daniel, I think you got your hand up first, but is there anyone else who'd like to speak a public comment? Please raise your hand. Ms. Malanga, okay. You're next. Anyone else? Ms. Morelli, you can be fourth. And then I see a hand behind there, and Mr. Svetvilaas. There's five. That should be enough. Please, go ahead, Ms. Malanga.
Thank you. Sally Malanga, 57 Ridge Road. So I wanted to speak about the proposed designation as an area in need of redevelopment for Essex Green and the Executive Drive, and a number of us attended the previous planning board meeting and made our comments known there, and some of us are here again tonight to let you know what we said there. And I want to let you know that I'm all for modernizing Essex Green Shopping Center and Executive Drive, but without the help of the West Orange taxpayer. The properties do not meet the criteria for redevelopment, which are mentioned on page 11 of the October 2017 Paul Greigle Report. We did read the whole report, very interesting, but the key components are Section B and D, where the facilities have to be in so great a state of disrepair as to be untenantable. That means can't find or retain tenants. And D, they have to be detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. And all of us can see that that's not the case. So I'm concerned that the Greigle Report comes to paper-thin, disingenuous, and even false conclusions, not substantiated by the redevelopment law, and not in the spirit of the law, which is to do good work for communities by revitalizing blighted areas. So everyone can see that the properties are dated and nothing more. Regarding the idea that came up that the planning board and the town council are only voting on declaring it an area in need of redevelopment, but not voting on bonds or tax abatements. According to the TAP article on September 26, Richard Trank, the attorney for the township, said, "This is why I'm urging the council to allow the West Orange Planning Board to see if this project is eligible for redevelopment funds." So that is the purpose of this. It really can't be broken into separate votes. The purpose of declaring it an area in need of redevelopment is to open up the funding, you know, through tax abatements. I'm concerned that it may actually be illegal to declare it an area in need of redevelopment when it is not. This would open up the town's bank account to wealthy developers. We could be the subject of a citizen's fraud lawsuit. That's one of my concerns. There was also another concern raised about where to put the Department of Public Works' an animal shelter, because apparently that was planned to move it up there. I'm all for the town renting property at Essex Green for the animal shelter. Those animals do deserve a public venue where adoptions are made and pet products could be sold, but the Department of Public Works needs to find a quiet place hidden away from the people so they can do their jobs. So in a town where homeowner property values are depressed compared to our surrounding towns, and where citizens strain to pay the property taxes, the developers and the administration want Essex, West Orange taxpayer to subsidize multimillion-dollar businesses under the premise that this is for the public good, and I think that's wrong. The developers have the funds or can seek them, let them bring their innovative projects in such a manner that will not burden our municipal expenses with residential properties to the planning board for review and public input the old-fashioned way, by honest public debate and true entrepreneurial effort, and not with a tin cup out for the money that we can use in our town to maintain the history and natural beauty of our town. So thank you for considering my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga. Is there anyone else who has not been selected to speak, who wants to speak? Please raise your hand. We'll get you at the end. Mr. Pugliese? Mr. Daniel, please.
Good evening. Well, my name is Robert Daniel, 2B Buckingham Road. The television camera sees me. You hear me? Good. So I want to thank the town council men and women for the opportunity to express my thoughts on four issues. I am deeply distressed that our town council approved on September 19, 2017, a process that will ultimately lead to the granting of tax abatements towards the redevelopment of the most highly valued property in our township, which is Essex Green Shopping Mall and the Executive Drive office buildings. In my opinion, these were poorly informed decisions, and I hope they will not be followed by more bad decisions. If there is a problem with the public works and animal control in downtown, then remove them from the redevelopment in downtown. It's not too late, or find another place for them somewhere, but do not solve it by moving them to Executive Drive within 300 feet of Buckingham Road, Wedgewood Road, and Marion Drives. Leave it where it is. Nonetheless, we understand, and everybody here understands, that there's going to be redevelopment of Essex Green and Executive Drive, and that should be done. Clarion has the wherewithal to do it. Let them proceed. They don't need our help. They'll be in front of the planning board, and they can do whatever they need to do. But as our representatives that are sitting, three of you are here tonight, I hope that you're aware of the fundamental inequity of tax-abated properties to the rest of the folks who are sitting here in the room, and those who aren't sitting here in the room to those folks here in West Orange. So we'll be monitoring this situation vigilantly and publicizing it as aggressively as possible to ensure that our rights as citizen and taxpayers are properly accounted for. So that was issue number one. Second issue, we appear to have a lack of effective control in our zoning, building, and enforcement department at the far western corner of our township, and I'm specifically referring to Laurel Avenue and Eagle Rock Avenue. I understand there's been a temple operating out of a private house at 23 or 27 Laurel Avenue. I don't know if anybody's taking notes here, or Mr. Sayers is taking notes, for several years without proper permits, despite people warning the township about this, and nothing has happened. Excavation began a few days ago, or a week ago. Apparently, there weren't permits. It just kind of began. There's no soil erosion permit, flurry of things going back and forth. Suddenly, they're continuing to work. It's apparently a massive temple that's happening there. No problem. People can do a temple whatever they want. Our township prides itself on diversity of race, religion, cultures, however. Everybody, I understand, works within, in accordance with the rule of law. That includes the zoning board and the planning board. So it's not clear exactly what's happening on Laurel Avenue. I don't know who's taking notes here on behalf of the administration, but something's not right there, and it shouldn't be decreasing the property value of adjacent property owners. In addition, I had, if you remember me from Crestmont Country Club, been talking about the fact that they need sidewalks on Laurel Avenue. The planning board said, "Oh, there's no need for sidewalks. Nobody's walking around," yet the zoning board approved the project of a temple without inadequate parking, and everybody from the temple is going to have to walk from their parking space to the temple on Laurel Avenue with not a sidewalk in sight. So Laurel Avenue is going to need to be widened. It's going to need to have sidewalks. Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, all right? So what's happening here? So, bottom line, I'm moving on to topic number three, because I got four and I got a minute and 19 seconds left. So on the same subject of control and what's happening in enforcement, and Mr. Gross is reviewing his mail, how is it that the PNC Bank next to the JCC?
Please, please, please.
Excuse me?
Mr. Daniel, please, go ahead. Please. This is public comment. We shouldn't be responding. Please. No matter what he says. Please.
The PNC Bank next to the JCC on Northfield Avenue is reconstructing their entire parking lot, and despite all our policies and resolutions regarding complete streets and everything else, they're simply doing work without a permit, without a sidewalk, without anything. So there's an ordinance in our town called 20-3.1, which requires sidewalks from every property owner, yet PNC Bank simply proceeds merrily without anything. And just a heads up in my 30 seconds that are left, we have submitted an appeal of the zoning board's decision regarding Chase Bank at the corner of Eagle Rock and Pleasant Valley Way that will be coming in front of the full township council because of our disappointment with the decisions that were made by the zoning board. And I can elucidate the five reasons why, but I have nine seconds left, and I will respect the council's rules and regulations. So thank you for your time, and...
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Who do I ask to come up next? Was it Mr. Malanga? And then Ms. Morelli is going to be next, and then Mr. Svetvilaas, and last but not least, Mr. Pugliese, I hope.
Council President.
Mr. Malanga.
Members of the council, good evening. I'd like to mention one of the great accomplishments that this council is responsible for, and that's the West Orange Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Release Program. So far, in the almost two years of its existence, more than 500 cats have been trapped, neutered, spayed, adopted out. It's been a tremendous success in preventing the continued overpopulation of cats and kittens in West Orange. And this has been a group that has been funding itself, and we'd like the council to give consideration to providing funding, because we really are a supplement to the animal control work that the town does. So we'd like to have some consideration of putting something into the budget for the many thousands of dollars that are spent to trap, neuter, vaccinate, release, all these cats that are in town, as well as providing homes for many of the adult cats and kittens. So we'd like you to give some thought to that. We'd be grateful for that. And I know that Mr. Guarino, Council President Krokowiac, Council Member McCartney, you've all supported this group from when it was first proposed, and I know Mr. Kazer has been of great help in getting the ordinance drafted for this. So I'm grateful for all of that, and Tuesday is Giving Tuesday, and it would be great if you could all make a donation to West Orange Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Release, W-O-T-N-V-R.com. Any contribution that is made will be doubled by the Gates Foundation, so it's a good opportunity to provide extra funding to this very worthwhile organization. Another subject, I was driving here with my wife down Mount Pleasant Avenue, and I've spoken about this previously to the council, and I've spoken to Anthony Pugliese about this, about sidewalks on Mount Pleasant Avenue. I know that there's been discussion of it. I was told that there's not enough room, the road is not wide enough, the road is too steep, it would not comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'd like that to be looked at again. We saw people walking tonight. It's really a tragedy waiting to happen. I know you have a lot of issues that you have to contend with. I know that for Councilwoman McCartney, Councilman Guarino, Council President Krokowiac, you've all been concerned about pedestrian safety. Please also give some attention to this street. We really, I once saw a woman walking east on that road around the sharp curve, holding a child in the outside hand as she's walking east in the eastbound lane. It's fortunate that nothing occurred that was an injury or death to anyone at that time, but please look at that. And lastly, the Essex Green Shopping Center. You've heard others mention this previously. There's been a report prepared. It's truly not a blighted area. Keep that word in mind when you are reading the report of Mr. Greigle. Should this matter come before you after the planning board, keep the word in mind, blight. Does it look blighted to you? No broken windows, no graffiti, no gang activity, no garbage strewn about. It's actually pretty well-maintained. And the fact that it was acquired just a year and a half ago for about $95 million, and it's an appreciating asset. It has gone up from a value of $40 million for one property owner to $95 million in the course of, was it 15 years? I think Mr. Krokowiac would know better as to what the rise in price is, but clearly blighted properties do not appreciate. So I know that making Essex Green prettier, more efficient, more up-to-date is a worthwhile endeavor, but it should be done with the property owner's investment, not through tax abatements, not through redevelopment area bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Ms. Morelli? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight, who hasn't already been recognized by the chair? Mr. Svetvilaas, you're next. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
No, I just didn't get out of prison. Somebody handed this to me in the parking lot, thought I looked important, and said, "But you know who belongs to this, so..." You want it?
I'll get it, please.
Why don't you just read it off on camera, because maybe somebody who's watching it...
Now you look like you're in prison.
R, as in rosary, Z as in zebra, D as in dog, 7, 2, G as in Guarino.
Just like the Leesaw. Good job.
I'm getting better and better every day. What could I tell you? You get better with age. Anyhow, Rosary Morelli from Ralph Road, and I want to say I'm so happy they paved my seat, my street, because it's starting to look like Tobacco Road. Now it looks really good. Anyhow, a few things to talk about tonight. One is Essex Green. I did go to the planning board meeting, and I did express my opinion. One of my concerns, is a strong one, that the planner, Mr. Greigle, has a conflict of interest in acting in this situation, declaring it as an area requiring redevelopment, and then having a say in approving it. So it raises a lot of red flags. So, it raises a lot of red flags, I did bring this up, I think you have to really look at this very carefully, maybe get legal counsel or whatever, but it's not good. I strongly recommend that we get a full-time planner, I've been traveling town to town, working with senior issues, every town, especially in Essex County, has a full-time planner. I think the reason I had heard is we don't have one, is cost, the cost is less to have a consultant or whatever, we consider him. I think you have to support those comments with facts and figures. What I'd like to see from the CFO is, for the number of years we've had this consultant, what it's cost us on a year-by-year basis, all costs whatever, and for that same number of years prior to his being made the consultant or part-time planner, and using fully-loaded costs, and let's make our comparisons, and I'm sure you know how to build inflation in it, and do all of that. Do we have to Oprah that, or will you do it for the citizens so that we can stop complaining about not having a full-time planner? In the, this is senior issue, one of the initiatives in the White House Conference on Aging Report is seniors being of service, and what is happening, or what they want to happen, or encouraging to happen, is that seniors will help seniors, seniors volunteer to help seniors. So, right now, right tonight, I'm making a plea to anybody out there who knows how to knit and wants to teach seniors how to knit. I was approached by the social worker from Canterbury Village, and she said the people there want to learn how to knit, so I'm trying to find somebody, I don't know if the high school, I haven't spoken to Mr. Zakelli yet, but there are seniors who probably do, and they could help these residents there, it's another outlet for them. I've gotten like cases of yarn, brand-new yarn donated, we might have to get some knitting needles, but we need to get these seniors to help the senior citizens in that facility. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morelli. Mrs. Svetvillas, please. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak a public comment after Mr. Pugliese? Please raise your hand.
Hi, good evening, Lauren Svetvillas, L-O-R-E-N, and my last name, S-V-E-T-V-I-L-A-S. I may have a connection, Ms. Morelli, for the knitting with my daughter at the high school. I'd like to say thank you to the town...
Your address?
My address, I'm sorry, 699 Prospect Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm a neighbor of Councilman Cirillo's, and I'd like to thank the council, our leaf collection's been really great this season, they're neatening up things really well, they're not taking the rocks in front of my home as they did before, and pushing it under the brand-new driveway, it's been a much better experience, so that's great. I came to speak, I stand before you, I am part of a new township organization called Our Green West Orange, and our primary goal is to, to build relationships between the residents, and politicians, local businesses, and the environment. Essex Green Shopping Center, the redevelopment plan is a prime example of what we're trying to bring attention to and help residents understand better. The last time I stood here was not very long ago, it was before the planning board, and I asked Paul Greigle some questions after his testimony, if he could define his two roles as a contracted independent planner, who wrote a report supporting redevelopment at Essex Green, and that of a contracted West Orange planner, who will be the individual approving the report that he wrote, should the plan move forward. I also questioned the true nature of blight that he was claiming in his report. Planning board took issue with the term blight, but that's more or less what he was insinuating by, and testifying to. But, all of us have been to Essex Green Shopping Center at least once, and we've walked there around, we've seen the vacancies, that's common, at lots of different plazas and malls. But, there was no dilapidation as he claims in his report. He touted Bicycle Friendly Center needs to be put in there, but there's no bike lanes to get there, he talked about outdated delivery tunnels under the facility, but yet Clarion still spent millions on the property, knowing this. He didn't speak to the employees that were working there, he didn't talk to them, the tenants who have stores there, nor did he see any broken glass, or boarded windows, or some of the things that Mr. Malanga had just referred to. Our public advocate, Mr. Grossman, agrees with us, the residents, Mr. Trank and Mr. Greigle seem to feel the developer should get a tax break, and I think that's at the cost of us residents who are paying fairly high property taxes to begin with. My concern is that our town will once again issue abatements that will impact us residents. I know this is early in the game, and the planning board has yet to vote on this issue, but I urge you to reconsider how you view these projects going forward. Seems we have a bit of nepotism and conflicts of interest happening in our town with regards to Mr. Trank, and I urge you to look beyond that, our town really does need help, but it's not in the form of tax abatements for wealthy developers. I think we should begin fixing the problems immediately. Our Green West Orange is committed to making this happen, and us residents can really use your help. Thanks for your attention and all your work, and of course, your support, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pugliese, is there anyone else who'd like to speak a public comment, please raise your hand?
Hi, Anthony Pugliese, representing County Executive Di Fancenzo, just wanted to give you a little rundown on some of the holiday events that we have currently underway and coming up in December. Of course, that Turtleback Zoo is the Holiday Light Spectacular, which started last weekend, it continues this weekend and next weekend, and then beginning December 8th until January 1st, it's every evening, invite everyone to come out, and also when you do come, we do collect winter coats, new toys, and non-perishable food items that are donated to organizations that help those in need, so it's a good evening out, it's also a good way to help those less fortunate. On December 2nd and December 3rd is our annual Holiday House Tour, Glenmont is part of that tour, there's 15 homes this year throughout Essex County, and it's a self-guided tour, if you go to our website, which is EssexCountyNJ dot org, in the events section, there will, not tonight, tomorrow, there will be a listing of all the sites that are participating, the hours vary, and some sites do charge admission, but it's well worth it to get a glimpse back into the history of Essex County. And then also at Kipps Castle and our Environmental Center, we have additional holiday events, so we just look forward to a nice holiday season and to see everybody at Turtleback Zoo, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugliese.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak a public comment, please raise your hand? Seeing no hands, I'm going to close public comment and open up response, if any, from, to my colleagues and also the administration. Councilman Cirillo, it's good to have you back.
Yes, thank you.
We were becoming concerned.
I'm sorry about that.
You're letting your day job get in the way again.
Getting in the way.
I didn't want to put you on the spot, I just wanted to recognize and welcome you.
Thank you very much, Council President, but I was just looking over, glancing over the councilman's notes, and kind of brings back memories from high school.
Most guys can be...
And he does a good job...
I can't wait until public comment.
He does a good job with note taking, so I noticed that...
And I can read them, too.
So, I noticed that the topic of conversation today, the plan, the potential area in need of redevelopment issue, that's at, still at the planning board level, so it's still a matter of discussion. I do want to hear about whether or not the involvement of the consultant is, is a conflict of interest, or that is, that is an issue that we need to be concerned about. We do know that that matter is still under further review by the planning board, I had a conversation with Councilwoman McCartney, actually, last night about this issue, she is the liaison to the planning board, and she was highlighting where we are in the process, that we really need to take a look at the, you know, whether or not we agree with the definition, or the category that's being highlighted as a reason for a potential declaration of an area in need of rehabilitation. So, the point is, is that we're becoming, as a council, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but we're becoming more informed as we move forward, and we look, we eagerly await the decision of the planning board, and also trying to address some of these issues relating to making sure that it's transparent and there are any, and no conflicts of interest in place. At the end of the day, we're trying to make the best decision for the municipality, what's in the best interest of the town and us as taxpayers. And, you know, I understand the concerns from the other side, we have to make sure that we are carefully guarding the credit and the treasury of the township, and we'll look for the final discussions, so it's still a work in progress, Council President. And I believe that's the extent of the issues that have come up in the public session. If I miss anything, I apologize, please talk to me later, or after the meeting, or email me. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like Councilwoman...
Well, okay, plenty.
I'll bring up the rear.
I'm trying to figure out where to begin. We do have a study that was presented to the planning board, and I appreciate everyone coming back, and the civility that we've all had. I have to start with a disagreement, because nowhere in the local redevelopment and housing laws, the word blighted used, this, there are A through H, different provisions for criteria that's used to determine if the site is in need of redevelopment, in an area in need of redevelopment. The conclusion of the report that was presented to the, by the planner, to the planning board, picked two, one was B and D, B is the discontinuance of the use of building previously used for commercial, and D, that's paraphrasing, it goes on to say, or the abandonment of buildings, or the same being allowed to fall into disrepair. And you're right, that hasn't happened, but they are vacant, and it is a discontinuance of use. They were built 60 years ago, D is more appropriate, where areas with buildings are improvements, which by reason of dilapidation, and an obsolete layout, which is what the planning board heard, that was continuously stressed, stressed that the layout is obsolete, the other ones did not apply. We had, let's see, I'm going to have to read from the report, it says that the study area consists of, this was during the presentation, lands developed with an office park and shopping center, as we know, both of which is characterized by outdated buildings and relatively high vacancy rates. And yes, it was mentioned, I do have from the tax assessor office, that they did spend $97 million on this site, which is a ridiculous amount of money, but it could be worth so much more. I certainly appreciate the fact that we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars, that has not even been approached. There was a comment made about how the council approved some resolution, the only resolution that was approved was to have the planning board study this area to see if it was determined to be an area in need of redevelopment. There is no financing, I have no intention of issuing bonds, that has not been discussed at all. I think it's just every place I highlight, it was all about the center buildings are outdated, and just what we know, how the retail market has changed so dramatically. Let me find something else. It says there was something about being untenable, they are untenable because there's little or no potential to re-tenant the property, because we, they can't market the property in the existing structures that, that are there. So, yes, they can redesign them, which needs to be done, but I guess what I'm, what I want is to be part of that discussion. So, I, you know, I am going to vote for an area in need of redevelopment, because I want to be at the table, to be part of what they're presenting. During the planning process, there was a comment that there is a high demand for warehouse space. I don't want a warehouse on Prospect Avenue, I don't want trucks up and down Pleasant Valley Way, I mean, 280. And my understanding is that because the Bayonne Bridge was razed, that's why there is now a high demand for this warehouse space, but that, just because it could be zoned for that, I, that's not what I want. I want to see a total plan, mentioned about Public Works, the Animal Control Center, they do have to move out of the Phase 1 of the, Phase 2 of the redevelopment zone. So, they, we are looking for sites, but for them, and if it can fit into the configuration of this property, then that would be a good thing. But, there could be other things that we add into this plan. So, I want to be a part of that process, it is a work in progress, and I want to be part of the progress, process to let a planner decide, let the study decide what is marketable, and the price should be so much greater than $97 million. Here's a sentence right here, it says, office, particularly the office market, the office market in New Jersey has experienced a fundamental change over the past decade, as we all know. Goes on to say, the conclusion, property is qualified under B, this is for the office space, to the partially vacant condition, there is the Department of Homeland Security, it's still there, but they have several months' notice that they can give if they want to vacate the property. It's 70 acres, there's a lot that can be done with 70 acres. The conclusion of this report, I can read, it says, it is a finding, this is from our planner, is finding of this investigation that the prevalent condition within the area is one in need of redevelopment, and that the study area in its entirety meets the statutory requirements for designation as a redevelopment area. That's pretty much a summary of what you heard from residents that were in attendance at the planning board meeting, and what the planning board heard. The plan will be carried, the presentation will be carried until December 6th at our next meeting, the presentation was made, but there has not been a discussion or deliberation at that, at that past November meeting. I don't know what else to say. I wanted to mention about, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about this, I just feel that I want it to be a process that we will have additional hearings, so that it can be discussed. What else? Rosary was talking about knitting, I'm moving in right into knitting from that, heavy topic. The Knitting Club, which I started 15 years ago, still meets every Thursday over at the Rent a House, so... Oh, I donated yarn to them, I went over there, okay. I can't talk anything about Mr. Daniel's comments about permits, that's something that the administration will have to handle. And Mr. Svetvillas, talking about Our Green West Orange, you know, the Environmental Commission has been in existence, it was defunct for a long time, I don't know what year the clerk would be able to tell us, that we reinstated that commission, we meet monthly, I would welcome participation, we worked tirelessly on the Sustainable Jersey application to recertify the town, and we share ideas there once a month. Our next meeting, we're not doing December because of the holidays, but our next meeting will be January 31st, welcome to come, we meet here in conference, conference room 109. Mr. Malanga's comment about the TNVR, I do appreciate, because, talking about Sustainable Jersey, because it is such a strong volunteer organization, and the township has no part of that, you know, we have, we wrote an ordinance, but the town doesn't partner with TNVR, we don't get any points for that on Sustainable Jerseys, so I do appreciate your comments, and I would like to create some kind of partnership, I've spoken to the director about this, so that it could be more of a collaborative effort, because it is going very strong, and I tried to present that in the recertification... And I tried to present that in the recertification application, but because it's an entirely volunteer organization, the township gets no credit, you get all the credit for doing all the work. So, if there's a way that we can look at that next year, to look at some kind of partnership. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Just like to bring the point to, you know, Mr. Malanga for bringing up, Kevin, thank you, with TVNR, you know, and we have to thank Judy Stires for really, you know, pulling this together, and of course, Ewen Salley and the others who brought this together. And yes, they do need help, and they've done a lot with the limited resources. They have done the 500-plus kittens, the adoptions, you know, the storing and housing of the cats within their own home. So, a big shout out to them and to the group. But yeah, we need to find a way of working with them, maybe opening up lines of communication. Maybe we're not the township, what we can do, but also other organizations that have funding availability to help the organization. I mean, it is hard. You know, food, upkeep, you know, shots, the whole thing, and even with the free, you know, spading, it's, you still need funds to run the organization, hopefully too, a new site for them that we were trying to find. I've been working with Judy. I'm trying to reach out to different areas of people who have space, that they could help them house it, and so far, it hasn't been successful, but I don't give up, so we will. But thank you for calling that out. Rosary with the knitting, that'd be great, and of course, the Councilwoman McCartney's program that started. I hope something could be merged in with that, or maybe something with the high school students, you know. I mean, help them to get involved because they did such a great job working on the survey, so maybe we can get the students to get involved with, you know, getting it out. But something that helps the seniors, it can't be just always seniors helping seniors. We have to help the seniors too, you know. It's a good thing, so we should look into that. Maybe the, the high school students can get more involved, and maybe it's a project that somebody would like to do for community service. Talking about Essex Green and the whole thing, I'd like to, and to complement what my colleagues have said, I'd like to have a seat at the table, and I want to hear what the planning board's vision is, and, but what vision we need to have for Essex Green, to what we want to see at Essex Green, what the residents want to see at Essex Green, and at the end of the day, what's best for the township of West Orange, not what's best for the developer, but what's best for the township of West Orange and its residents. We're not just going to open up our treasury and things like that, and I don't see any call for that at this point in time. But I want to hear everything. I want to see when, it hasn't been brought to the table yet. We haven't seen anything here at the council of what's being or going to be proposed by the planning board or approved by the planning board. So, I want to see all that together, finish reading Mr. Greigle's report, understanding it, talking to my colleagues, in particular, Councilwoman McCartney, because she spent her lifetime on the planning board. So, she has a good vision of what, you know, goes on and what can and cannot be. Anything with conflict of interest, I'd like to hear from legal, you know, what legal's input is. I'm not an attorney, and I'd like to hear what legal's point of view is. If there is a conflict going, then we need to be aware, and my colleagues, I'm sure, want to know all the ins and outs. And Mr. Daniels, what you said about any, any, what I was looking for, what's the word I'm looking for, nepotism on, I don't know where that was being directed, with Mr. Trank and what, and what was being said, you know, concerning, so I don't see where that comes into play. But, you know, just at the end of the day, that, just to let you know that, you know, I can't speak for my colleagues, but saying is, I want to have an open mind to what is going to happen. I want to have the full picture, the full thing in front of me before any decisions or any comment that's going to be made, and that's, that's what I want to say. And that's all I have to say, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to everybody who came up to speak tonight, and also to raise issues about different planning projects and issues here in town. Mr. Daniel raised the issue of the development going on over at, on Laurel Avenue, and the, a lot of the neighbors of that property have been fighting this project for multiple years, and they were very upset because they believed that the work was going on at the project that started in the last several weeks was outside of the two-year-and-a-day limit for the continuation of the variance approval that the zoning board provided. And I've been trying to get more information for them because there's not a whole lot of information out that's public, and I'm hoping to be able to get some information to the residents in the next day or two about that because the law, our ordinance, is very specific that it's not only, it's not two years and a day after the zoning board approval, but it's two years and a day after all of the appeals and the review of the project have been completed. And that is, that, in this case, that happened to push well past the original resolution date, and it appears that all of the work that's going on over there is within the timeline that's allowed under our, our zoning ordinance. But I'm hoping to get that information more specifically out in, in the next few days. But on to the redevelopment. I really appreciate you guys bringing this up because it is a major financial issue for the town, a major potential financial issue for the town for up to the next 30 years. I just want to read something at the start of the state redevelopment law to try to put things in perspective. Here's the start of the law. The legislature hereby finds, oops, sorry. I think I just closed my window. I swear, I'm not doing this to build suspense. I beg your pardon. The legislature hereby finds, determines, and declares, "There exist, have existed, or persist in various communities of this state conditions of deterioration in housing, commercial and industrial installations, public services and facilities, and other physical components and supports of community life, and improper or lack of proper development, which result from forces which are amenable to correction and amelioration by concerted effort of responsible public bodies, and without this public effort are not likely to be corrected or ameliorated by private effort." So, what this is saying is that if the private market cannot take care of, of a particular section of a town, then this, the town does have the right to step in, create the redevelopment area. A redevelopment area basically does two things. Number one, it allows you to put overlay zoning on that particular property, and what that means is that the zoning in that redevelopment area can be totally different from the zoning that applies to the rest of the town. We can just do just that zoning for that area. So, that's one thing you can do, and that way, you can help direct what you, as a township, want to happen in that area. The second thing it does, and this is where the rub is, is it provides the potential for financial incentives to redevelopers to actually come in and spend the money. Because if the private market won't take care of its, of the problem itself, then the theory is that the incentives will then allow redevelopers to come in and actually build something there that then generates economic activity that benefits everybody. The problem with that is that, the potential problem is that you can have tax abatements that can be worth millions of dollars over the, over as much as a 30-year period. And the, and the key issue here is whether the private market is capable or is actually taking care of any issues that have to do with these two properties. And let me, let me explain. Mr. Malanga mentioned about the property at Essex Green has been appreciating in value. In 1991, 1999, according to state property records, the database, the property was changed hands at $41.4 million. Three years later, it traded at almost 20% more, at almost $53 million. Four years later, it traded at a 67% increase to $88.225 million. And then in 2016, it traded at, when I say traded, I mean it sold, $97.85 million, which was another 10% over the previous 10 years. So, in that time period from 1999 to 2016, you had an appreciation on that property of 136.4%. So, what that tells me is that this is not an area that, that is sucking wind. It's area that people are putting good money, millions of dollars, in to buy this property. And I think Councilwoman McCartney made a very good point about use of the word blight or blighted. In the original law, in this, in the state, originally, there were multiple laws that had to do with redevelopment. They were all consolidated, I don't know, maybe 20 years ago. And in the consolidation, the word blight was taken out of the law. And so, even though there's a reference to it still in existing laws, if you look at the redevelopment law itself, it doesn't say that there has to be a finding of blight. All it says is that, in more detail, not to beat a dead horse, but I put up the, the, Mr. Greigle's report up on Facebook about three weeks ago, along with references to the state law, also to the September 19th, the video of the September 19th council meeting, which I encourage you to watch because it was about 45 minutes of a presentation by Mr. Trank, the town attorney, and also the proposed redevelopers. I just, I just want to say, we already, we as a township already have a place at the table because whatever they do there has got to come before the planning board. We don't need a redevelopment area, a finding of a redevelopment area in order to have a, have a say of what goes on over there. But there'd be, there's an easy way to just end this whole issue of the danger to taxpayers, and that is to have the redevelopers, the proposed redevelopers, and maybe the administration just say, "We're not going to offer any financial incentives. We recognize that the people that own these properties," I'm not kidding you, "have hundreds of millions of dollars of property and financial resources. These guys are doing this stuff all over the world." So, if they don't need, if they really don't need incentives for a place like Essex Green and Executive Drive, all we're doing is giving them money to increase their profits. There's no incentive needed. And you can just see it, they've already spent about $115 million between the two properties to acquire them in the last, in the last couple of years. But we'll see what, we'll see what happens. So, I encourage you, I'll repost the Facebook, the material on Facebook. It's very interesting reading. And the next planning board meeting, where you can come and discuss this, is Wednesday, December 6th, 7:30, right here. Anybody else? Anybody from the administration? Anybody who wants to come?
No, I wanted to say thank you for reading the preface of the redevelopment law because that is exactly what we're talking about and the reasons why we're looking at this as an area in need of redevelopment. And I guess when you talk about tax abatements, it sounds like they're not paying taxes. And we have had this conversation, John, you can help me out with this, about payments in lieu of taxes and how we can do the full assessment of the land. They are going to pay taxes, and they're made whole, so...
Yeah, well, you said it correctly. I mean, the, the, at the end of the day, a, a project would only be offered at a tax, any tax incentives if, but for those incentives, it would not be built. So, if there is a particular project that the town decides that it's to the town's benefit to do that, and in order to accomplish the town's goals, not the developer's goals, if the town determines that they need to provide some incentives because a private developer would not do what the town wants done there, then they, it has that option of offering incentives. And those incentives would always be less than whatever the increase in value was so that the town would always benefit, have a positive benefit. The question is, what, you know, what, how do you measure those benefits? Sometimes you measure them in tax dollars, sometimes you measure it for the long term in terms of what the development is, and that's all to be determined when that time comes, and that isn't, that is not the point we're at, we're at right now, we're at a point of, so really, the town through the planning board determining its vision for that site, and that's where we are.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Sounds like we're finished with Pope Coman. Madam Clerk?
Review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting of October 24th, 2017.
Consent.
Report of township officers, municipal court, September and October of 2017.
Consent.
Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Council President, I have a question. John, this would be for you, please. We have a resolution, 23417, authorizing collector of taxes to refund a payment, but the number, let me find the resolution, the number on the resolution is so close to this 55.22?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you know, it's just listed as land service in Fairfield, but it's just, I meant it's so close to this area in need of redevelopment, those block and lot numbers. Do we have any idea who that might be?
In turn, I mean, I can find out who it is. I mean, these, these are all based on judgments that have been...
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly can try to find out some more information for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, 234 is just an overpayment. Those, these aren't actually tax bills.
Overpaid, they were, they were overpaid, I apologize. Overpaid.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was thinking of tax appeal. That's why it was so close to the redevelopment area, that was one more tax appeal. Okay.
That overpayment may or may not have been close, but...
Then no other questions?
Thank you. Councilman, do you have any questions or want to pull anything?
No, sir.
Councilman Cirilla, do you have any questions on the resolutions, or do you want to pull anything?
No questions today.
Okay. I just had a couple of, a couple of quick questions on a couple of the resolutions on Resolution Agenda Item A, Resolution 23317. It's a resolution authorizing special emergency notes in the amount of $1.2 million to fund a special emergency appropriation for the payments. Before we go on to this, we've talked about this before, I just want people to know. Mr. Gross, maybe 32nd elevator on why we need to borrow, or why we need to make an emergency act...
Yeah, this, this is a sister resolution to the ordinance that's on for second reading for authorizing $1.2 million to go for severance payments for employees who are retiring to pay out the township's obligations to them for their accrued life, accrued liability for sick, sick time and vacation time and such.
And if we, if we do, if this is to put in the appropriation, if we do borrow for this and we expect to borrow some money, we have to...
Basically allows us to pay it. It allows us to smooth these costs over a five-year period for taxpayers as opposed to having to pay them all one buck.
Okay. Sounds good. On Agenda Item H, Resolution 240-17, it's a resolution authorizing the township to retain Matrix New World to perform geophysical testing on the property located at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue as part of the township's due diligence prior to closing on the purchase of the property at a cost of $2,270. Just a, just a quick couple of, I don't see Mr. Lapore here, but according to the resolution, we found a, an oil tank that we didn't expect to find, and so we have to go in and sort of excavate and look at that? Is that, is this...
Well, the, the original, from the original report, there's a finding that, that needs further study before we, before we buy the property. It's, it's good due diligence to make sure that there are no issues that we're, we're buying into.
Okay. So, I know we've talked about this previously because the council majority has approved this. This is a, this is a cost that we, meaning the town, is going to incur, correct? But if there's...
Yes, it's part, it's part of our, our purchasing cost, if you will, in terms of that.
Okay. But if it requires remediation, if they find a leakage or whatever, or have to pull the tank out or whatever, then that's something that Exxon will take care of?
That was in the resolution.
We would, we would, we would not move forward with purchasing the property unless that was the case.
Okay. Okay. And, thank you. And then I just wanted to pull Agenda Item C, Resolution 235-17, Resolution authorizing increasing the cap of fees to $5,391 for the retention of Mr. Richard Vausch. We have, we have an executive session on that scheduled, and I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't vote on this as part of the consent agenda before we've actually had the, the executive. So, I'd like to, so let's just pull it. Let's just pull it.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Council President, I have one more... Council President, I have one more comment. I'm sorry. It's pulled.
Yes.
And a resolution for executive session.
It's on consent.
Yes.
On resolution L two-four-four dash seventeen, this was resolution authorizing the agreement with Clara Moss to utilize police substation for crisis intervention program. And just as a volunteer with Operation Hope, I did go to an open house that was just here at eighty-one Northfield Avenue, Center for Network Therapy, solving addictive puzzle. And I just, I, I spoke to Lieutenant Montesillon just before he retired, so I'm not sure if this, where this ended up, but this is right here on Northfield Avenue. Just wanted to hand it over, so that we can share that with the police also, with all the efforts that the township's doing with Operation Hope. Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to, and you mentioned this, I just want to sort of raise the flag, because Clara Moss is going to be utilizing some of this space in our police substation on, on Washington Street, and this is the resolution for it. This was brought to us, according to the police chief, because I asked him a few questions, by Ms. Wanda Maragney. Those of you in town, probably a lot of you know her, and I just wanted to give a shout out for her efforts to start up this crisis intervention program from Clara Moss. So I think we're done, maybe we move Madam Clerk to consent agenda, and then maybe we go into executive session?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Do you want to do ordinances first before you go in, in case there's anybody?
What's your pleasure, colleagues? Do you want to do the ordinances?
Go through the ordinances, and then we go to, then we, everybody can go home.
That sounds good. Well, we still have the executive session, just because we do the, just because we do the ordinances.
No, I'm saying, then we can do the executive session, then the folks can go home.
All right, sounds good.
Ordinances on second and final reading, ordinance twenty-five-twenty-nine dash seventeen, refunding bond ordinance providing funding for an emergency appropriation for payment of amounts owing to others for taxes levied in and by the Township of West Orange, appropriating three point two million dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three point two million dollar bonds or notes of the township for financing the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Motion moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. Under state law, I'm sorry, do we want to discuss this first, or do we want to?
I think you have to do the public first.
Okay. Under state law, all ordinances on second and final reading require a public hearing. Therefore, we're going to have a public hearing, I'm going to open it up. You can be recognized by the chair, come up and speak on just this ordinance, and we'll be here as long as people want. Again, when you, when you come up to speak, you just speak on ordinance two-five-two-nine dash seventeen. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at the public hearing on this ordinance? I'm not seeing any hands. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Seeing no hands, I close the public hearing, and open this up to my colleagues. And Mr. Gross, just a, just a quick, I know you've told us this before, but I can't remember. There's a difference between the one point two million referenced in the resolution that we approved on consent agenda, and then the issuance of three point two million here in the ordinance.
The, the one point two reference is ordinance two-five-three-one-seventeen.
Oops.
Is related to a different ordinance.
Okay.
This ordinance has to do with tax appeals for this year, in order to finance them over a four-year period. This will again smooth out the cost of this for the taxpayers. If the ordinance were not adopted this evening, then we would have to pay that out of current year's operations, which would then leave a huge increase in taxes for property taxpayers next year. So this is, again, not exactly housekeeping, it's a little more than that, but certainly it is about good practices for how we're going to pay for these particular expenses. Let, just, just one last thing about this, we, we do not anticipate certainly coming back next year, and probably over the next couple of years, for such an ordinance, while we, while we might prepare for it just in case, but we don't anticipate that that's going to be an issue.
Because you don't expect to have the same level of tax appeals?
Yeah, because we've, we've pretty much run through the lion's share, not all, but the lion's share of commercial tax appeals, so this should, this should take care of us for a while.
Sounds good. Any comments or questions?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt twenty-five-twenty-nine dash seventeen?
So moved.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. The motion, I'm sorry, the motion carries, the ordinance passes.
Thank you.
Please.
Twenty-five-thirty dash seventeen, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain Township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing the employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. Under state law, all ordinances on second and final reading require a public hearing. We're, I'm opening the public hearing now, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair if you'd like to come and speak on this ordinance, just this ordinance only. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I'm not seeing any hands. Last chance, anybody who'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, I'm closing the hearing, and opening this up to my colleagues. Perhaps Mr. Gross, another thirty-second elevator?
Yeah, this one is pretty much housekeeping, this is a salary ordinance to clarify and/or correct some discrepancies that we have discovered through our process this year of implementing our new HR program, so.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five-thirty dash seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes, motion carries, ordinance passes.
Twenty-five-thirty-one dash seventeen, an ordinance authorizing special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon forty, I think I messed that up, forty, I'm going to say dash five point three for severance liabilities resulting from accrued leave in connection with a layoff or retirement of employees. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. Going to have a public hearing on this ordinance. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand and be recognized by the chair. Not all at once, just raise your hand, I'll get to you. I'm seeing no hands. I'm going to close the public hearing, and open it up to my colleagues.
Council President, I do have a question, John. With, are we seeing with the retirees, are they taking advantage of the five-year payout, or is it a lump sum? Do you see, is there like a person?
Yeah, we, these are lump sum payments that we finance over the five years.
Oh, we're financing a refa, oh, that's different, okay. Thank you.
And I think they can, the, the employee can.
They can, can opt for it.
They can, that was.
We cannot, and some do, some do. Part, part of this is, is from previous years, vast majority of it.
Could I just ask, the supplemental debt statement that supports this is not up on the website, we've still got one from like April up there? Can you just, when you get a chance, just?
Sure.
Get that up on the website, so when people go, they, they know what our debt exposure is, please. Anything else?
Can you talk about that, the debt exposure, the supplemental debt statement? Still in good standings?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, I don't, I did not bring it with me this evening, I did. The supplemental debt statement basically, it, it indicates basically where we stand in terms of, of debt previously, and then with this added in, and it's still, we're still in a very good position in low one percents, so.
I think I might have it here. Yes, I do. Just to give you the numbers.
It's just below one and a half.
With this improvement, we will have outstanding debt of eighty-three point nine six seven million, which is one point four one nine percent of equalized valuation, I think it's averaged over the last three years. So both of those numbers are high for us, we're, we're borrowing a lot.
Well, relative to, high is a relative figure, in terms of what, what we're allowed, we're allowed up to three and a half percent. When we go through our bond ratings, the, where we are is considered to be a low number for municipality, in terms of, we've, we have had increases, we've been doing more capital improvements over the past few years to basically catch up, and there were a number of years when we were doing not, so.
So both of these numbers are, I guess, probably historic highs. When I first, when I first got on the council, I don't know what it was when you joined, but it was under one percent, now it's, it's up over one point four percent. But you're right, we could be, we could be borrowing a lot more money, I'm glad we're not.
We're not.
It's just, it's just very concerning, just, I know every, just about every time you talk about our debt going up, Mr. Gross, you talk about how we're going to pay it down, so, we really, in my opinion, I think we really need to focus on it as a council to, to try to pay this stuff down. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk? Oh, we've already, do we approve?
No, not yet.
Okay, sorry.
Is there a motion to adopt twenty-five-thirty-one dash seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. Motion carries, ordinance is approved.
Ordinances on first reading, twenty-five-thirty-two dash seventeen, an ordinance establishing chapter twenty-three, sections five of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Township of West Orange Skate Park. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. The motion carries, the ordinance is approved on first reading, it will come up, I guess, in, I don't think, it will be enough time?
Yes, yeah, I advertised it already.
Oh, okay, okay.
Had I not, there would not have been enough time.
Right, okay.
Twenty-five-thirty-three dash seventeen.
How are you sure that we were going to approve it?
I wasn't, I took a chance. Sometimes you've just got to take a chance. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsections seven dash thirty-two point two, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange, handicapped parking spaces at eighty-two Valley Way and twenty-four Park Terrace. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes, motion carries, ordinance is approved on first reading. Will we hear this in December fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
I took another chance. Twenty-five-thirty-four dash seventeen, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsections seven dash twenty-nine point one, speed limits in general in subsections seven dash thirty-three, school zones, revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes. Motion carries, ordinance is approved on first reading. Next on the agenda is matters pending, new matters. Does anybody have anything?
I do.
Yes, Madam Clerk?
Just for the next meeting, just so you're all aware that you will need to nominate the council, a new council president, so just keep that in mind, and.
Okay. Councilman Cirillo, at the last council meeting, you talked a little bit about this, with some sort of evaluation, federal evaluation of Deegan House. Have you had a chance to?
Absolutely.
To pull that out? I don't want to put you on, so I put, okay.
No, we had, there was a meeting of the board this past Thursday. According to the executive director, Debbie Salnorri, the, while we are disappointed about the inspection score extended by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, we do understand that the inspection protocols that are utilized under that program are very subjective. Not that, you know, we are making any excuses for the shortcomings found in that inspection score, but there's a, a lot of subjectivity built into that process, into that, into those protocols. For example, if a property, and this was one of the findings, if a property is found to have a junction box, an electrical box, which has an opening of a half an inch or more, that's a deficiency, because it's considered a health and safety hazard, because someone can stick their finger and become electrocuted. It doesn't matter whether or not that junction box is behind three doors, and nobody can go in there except for the electrical contract. If, for example, there's a piece of glass that's found in front of the property, a piece of glass, that's a health and safety item, and you lose five points over, from a point of one hundred point scale, or from a scale of one hundred points. So, number one, there's a lot of subjectivity built into that, into that, into that system. You can literally have buildings in disarray that can pass, and you can have properties such as the Deegan House, that's in a decent, safe, and sanitary condition that does not, so. But what we're doing is, the board is asked that the management is more proactive, while there is subjectivity in the inspection process, we still need to go into those junction boxes in advance, to assure that, you know, once the HUD comes in to do the inspections, that we learned a lesson, and that this doesn't happen again, to make sure that we close those, we seal those gaps in the junction boxes, and make sure that we clean any garbage in front of the properties, in case of, of a piece of glass being, being found, or being seen. In addition to that, in addition to proactively addressing some of these concerns prior to the inspection, I've also recommended to Debbie, the, the property manager, to consider hiring a professional to come in and just shadow these inspectors when they come in, to assure that, and I've done this in the past, in some properties that I've managed, to assure that HUD is identifying the protocols, or identifying the shortcomings properly, according to what the federal regulations state. So she, tomorrow, as a matter of fact, I, I, I'm scheduled to send her a list of references, companies that she can quote, to make sure that, to, to assure that she can have someone on the site to do the inspection, that can double check, and use the, can be used as quality control, to, to make sure that that property passes inspection, and not only pass, but improve on, on the inspection score. So it's, it's, in some ways, it's a lesson learned, but under no, we shouldn't, we shouldn't really consider the property to be in, in that condition, I mean, like I said, there's a lot of subjectivity built in, and Debbie does a good job, the board has been happy, the residents have been happy with the property, and we just have to make sure that, that we do well, and we know what the inspectors look for when they come in, that, that's all, so. So yeah, the board has been very proactive, ensuring that the score improves.
Sounds good. Is there any penalties associated with this?
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If, if you fail the inspection, it's just, you know, you're not doing, if, if, if a property continuously fails, then, you know, HUD steps in and says, "Hey, what's going on here?" And they can put you in a plan, to, in a recovery plan, to address those deficiencies. And I've seen that happen before, where a property significantly drops, it, it raises red flags in Washington. And they can say, "Hey, we're going to put you in a recovery plan to make sure that you improve, we want to see your work order system, we want to see the level of personnel, we want to see your contractors, to make sure that the properties are well managed." So while there are no penalties right away, if there is a pattern, it raises red flags. So that's, that's how the system is designed.
Thank you, thanks for being on top of that. Any other pending matters?
No.
Just a, just a quick logistic question, Mr. Kay. Just a, just a quick logistic question, Mr. Kazer. Can we close the meeting now, go into executive session? Oh.
No, because we.
I asked the wrong person.
You reserved on the resolution, so the executive session is not going to take long.
Right, right. Okay.
We have to come back and adopt that resolution.
So, we're going to adjourn for the executive session and hopefully be back in five or 10 minutes. I don't expect it's going to be very long. We are now back from our executive session. We have one remaining item on the agenda. There's nothing really to report from executive session, that's why we call it an executive session, but we do need to vote on resolution.
235-17.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Take it away.
This is a resolution authorizing an increase of the cap on fees to $5,391.20 for the retention of Mr. Richard Vausch of Porzio, Bromberg, and Newman to serve as independent investigator for the purpose of conducting a confidential personnel investigation. Is there a motion to adopt resolution 235-17?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Kukovia?
Yes, reluctantly. But motion carries, resolution passes. We are now at the end of our meeting. I will entertain a motion.
To say Happy Thanksgiving.
To adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and hopefully we'll see you back here on December 5, our next and last council meeting of the year.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. I wonder if you would be a little.